This meeting of the Margate Planning Board is called to order. The plan for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Tom Collins. Clem Wazleski. Richard Patterson.
Here.
Michael Cristaldi.
Here.
Jim Gallantino.
Here.
Margaret Gubernalty.
Here.
Craig Pomisano. Stephen Giasecki.
Here.
Remy Pelosi.
Here.
Joseph DiGeralamo.
Here.
Ron Gruppo.
Here.
Michael Richmond.
This electronic meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and all rules and procedures which govern a regular meeting shall govern this meeting as well. Our goal is to have this electronic meeting run smoothly and as close to a normal meeting as possible. By joining this meeting, you have agreed to allow your activity to become part of a public record. The platform will be muted only during portions of the meeting where there is no public comment. During the public comment portions of the meeting, please mute yourself when not speaking, so as to give other participants their right to be heard and to keep a proper record of the proceedings. Public meeting agenda will be posted one day prior to the meeting on our website. If you want to speak, you must first state your name and ask to be recognized by me. Once recognized, you may make your comments in accordance with the public decorum protocols. Only one meeting attendee or member of the public may speak at a time, and only after stating your name and being recognized. Remember, when not speaking, please place your device on mute so you do not interrupt another speaker or the public meeting. Please speak clearly to limit background noise. Please isolate yourself as much as possible so there's no background audio coming through. If there is excess audio coming through your device, or if you fail to observe public decorum protocols, the host shall identify such, and your device may be muted to ensure there are no disruptions to our business. Please be advised that the board reserves the right to disconnect any member of the public who does not observe proper rules of order. I'd like to hear a motion to approve the minutes of August 27, 2020.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to hear a motion for the approval of the conclusions and resolutions, number 33, 2020, Jason Silverstein; number 34, 2020, Robert and Sandra Edelstein; number 35, 2020, Stephen and Marion Haney; and number 36, 2020, Mark and Debbie Zuma. Your motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion. I'll second the motion. It's Joe.
Okay. Who made the motion?
Mike Richmond.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
None heard, motion passes. Before we start, on number six, number D, Michael Neal, 8014 Monmouth Avenue, Block 308, Lot 13, the case has been called, has been pulled. It will not be heard tonight. It may or may not come back, we don't know at this point, so if you are here for that meeting, 8014 Monmouth Avenue, it will not be heard tonight.
And Rich, just for the record, there's some legal lease to get in there.
Okay.
For the Michael Neal application, as the chairman said, it will not be heard tonight. There is a possibility, there's a good possibility that it's going to get pulled, but if it is going to get heard, it's going to be at next month's meeting, which is October...
29.
29th, at 6:30 PM, in this room. So if it is heard, the applicant will not be required to republish or read notice. There will be, if it is on, there will be a new login information that you'll need to get, so just call the board administrator and check the website, and we'll post the updated login information for go-to meeting. So if anyone's here for that Michael Neal information, application, you don't have to stay on the line. Thanks, Rich.
Okay. First case is Oberon LLC, 2426 South Benson Avenue, Block 125, Lot 34, located in the multifamily district, seeking sea variance relief for front yard setback, front yard landscaping, and possibly others, in order to construct a two-family dwelling. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLarnan?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Margaret Nolte has to, I have to recuse myself on this case?
Okay. For the record, Margaret Nolte is refused. Mr. McLarnan, would you be sworn in, please?
Mr. McLarnan, please raise your right hand. You swear affirm testimony you're about to give of the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thanks.
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. Before I start my report, I just want to thank you for covering my position last week, last month. I was out on family emergency, but all is well, I'm glad I'm back. So my report is based on the application of Peter and Jill Romano. It was revised earlier today. I would describe the small revision, but it does eliminate one of the variances in the application. So the application is in regard to Peter and Jill Romano, 24-26 South Benson Avenue, Block 125, Lot 34, which is in the MF zone. The FEMA requirements and the building height requirements are, in the reference section of page one, it is deemed complete. This is a hardship variance because there is two front yards and two side yards, and it's also substantial benefit variance. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinance of the city of Margate. In order to construct a new two-family dwelling within the city's MF zone or multifamily zone, the density requirements are being met, however, some variances are required for the front yard setbacks on Decatur Avenue, front yard landscaping, side yard setbacks, and curb cuts to comply with off-street parking. Actually, the side yard setbacks do comply at this time. So page two, show the zoning chart for the MF zone, and as you're aware, the MF zoning has been changed to if you want to build anything in the MF zone, you comply with the MF standards. So the report I did earlier today, the small revision, was a front yard setback for the porch on Decatur Avenue, where the previous prevailing setback was 7.4 feet, and it's now 2.9 feet, so the five-foot setback to the porch now complies. I presume what happened was, on these measurements, the ordinance says that if a front porch is in line or behind the front wall of a building, it does not get counted into the average setback. So that's usually the case when that change happens. So turning to page two, page three, the documents reviewed, and the continuation of the zoning chart continues. Flip to page four, and there's the variances required. In the report in front of you, you'll see that there are six variances. Two have been eliminated. The half-story for the third floor, and the front, and the front yard setback to the porch or deck on Decatur Avenue. So the remaining variances are as follows. Front yard setback to the building on Decatur Avenue, whereas prevailing setback required is 21.4 feet. Minimum without prevailing is five feet for the MF zone, and the proposed front yard setback is 12 feet. This is based on Section 175 Schedule B-1. The second variance is the front yard landscaping on Decatur Avenue, whereas the minimum front yard landscaping coverage requires 60%, or 50% with steps due to PFE increases, and 48.5% is proposed. Again, this is a direct reflection of the front yard variance setback to the building. Third-floor decks, this is actually two variances, because there are two units seeking this request, whereas third-floor decks are not permitted at this location, and two are proposed, one for each unit. Again, this is based on definition, Section 175-2. The last and final variance required is the number of curb cuts, whereas the maximum number of curb cuts per property is one unit based on driveways permitted, or two 18-foot wide curb cuts are proposed. Waivers requested, Section 4, I originally had none requested, but according to Section 175-25B, Preface E7, it's a building's design standard, it's not a variance, and it says where large structures are required, massing and blank walls shall be avoided as much as possible, and where necessary, relieved by variation in architectural relief and details. Excessively expansive blank walls are prohibited. No building shall be measured longer than 80 feet on any plane. This building measures 85 feet, so it doesn't quite meet the design standard. However, I think that can be addressed by the applicant, one way or another. Again, the elevations do vary in light to the elevator shaft and other items. So my comments are as follows, the, again, I just, this application was put on hold for a month because of the half-story did not comply with the definition, where the area under hip gamble roof, where the roof, the ceiling height in excess of five feet is less than 50%. And again, the half-story shall be fully contained within the roof of the second floor, and having the permitted dormers, exceptions for elevators and stairways where applicable. The revised plans now show the half-story now meets definition above, which are permitted in Margate. Front yard setbacks on Benson Avenue meet the prevailing and minimum requirements, however, the front yard setback for the dwelling along Decatur Avenue requires a variance, as they do not meet the required setback. They do meet the minimum setback requirement of five feet, however, they do not meet the prevailing for the building, the deck now does. The proposed distance to the face of the garage meets the required distance of 18 feet. The front yard setback on Decatur Avenue are being compared to the rear yards of several other dwellings, creating the larger setback requirement. Again, yet the applicant will have to provide testimony to that. The front yard landscaping requirement is not being met due to the request for the front yard setback. The number of curb cuts is inherent from the fact that two separate units, each facing different streets, creates this situation. The logical remedy is to request a variance and grant it. Deck for definition, third-floor decks are not, shall be permitted on all houses on the ocean side of Atlantic Avenue. Such third-floor decks shall be subject to all setback requirements. Again, this is not being met, so two variances are required, one for each unit. No street trees are shown on either frontage, and they shall be shown with approved species from the city's land use ordinance. Again, the revised plans do show the street trees. A grass governorship is required on both frontages, and I do believe they are shown on the plans now. Any signs that are interfering with a proposed driveway shall be relocated at the applicant's expense with city approval. No fences are proposed on a lot, and the board may want to limit how much fence is permitted towards the front of the house. Again, do we want a fence going all the way, just 12 feet from the sidewalk? Question, comment number four, are the rooms in the front exterior shower, again, the applicant shall provide testimony what some of these rooms are, and the plans do show that they are showers in the front. They do comply with the ordinance, because they are not enclosed in structures. My last comment is a comment may be requested to possibly subdivide the property into two smaller fee simple parcels, which would create two very small lots, smaller than required lots, does not meet the intent of the master plan, preserving larger lots within the MF zone may be more ideal. Recommendations are on page six, and again, the basic guidelines for voting on a C1 and C2 criteria, to provide a, some criteria for the board members. I believe that's, that's all my comments at this point in time. Thank you.
Roger?
Yes, sir.
On the front yard landscape area, it's 60% minimum, 50% with the steps?
Correct.
So is the 48.5%, is that a variance from 50, or is it a variance from the 60?
It would, they are well below the 50%, so it's a variance from the 50%. So the, even with the credit for the steps, they do not meet the minimum requirement.
So it's a two, it's a one and a half percent variance?
Correct.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Patterson, good evening, Board. Brian Callahan of the law firm, Callahan Thompson, on behalf of the applicant, our applicant's Oberon LLC. I have tonight, Mr. Mattos, I have Pete Romano, John Obelenas, and Arthur Chu. Pete's the managing member, John Obelenas is our architect, Arthur Chu is our engineer and planner. So my, I would ask that we swear them in, so if the board has questions as we go through, they're all ready to answer them, but I know you have a long agenda.
Sure. If you, just go down the line, Mr. Romano, Mr. Obelenas, and Mr. Chu, each state your name and address or business address for the record, I'll swear all three in together.
Pete, you have to unmute yourself.
Yes, sir. My name is Peter Romano, 24 South Benson in Margate, New Jersey. What else?
John?
John?
John Obelenas, 102 South Eighth Street, Vineland, New Jersey.
Arthur Chu, 130 West Seaview Avenue, Linwood, New Jersey. I'm a professional engineer and planner.
If you can each please raise your, raise your right hand, you each swear affirm the testimony you're about to give of the truth?
I do.
I will.
I got three idios. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'm going to start with Mr. Chu first, as our engineer planner, so he can get you familiarized with the site, and walk you through a little bit of how the street lays out, and some of the variances we need, mostly on Decatur Avenue. Mr. Chu, why don't you just put your qualifications on the record?
I'm a professional engineer, professional planner. I was municipal engineer in Ocean City for 10 years. I graduated from Princeton University. I've been a professional engineer for over 15 years.
We accept his qualifications.
All right, why don't you go ahead and walk the board through a little bit of what the site looks like now, and what we're proposing?
Right now, the site is a duplex, it's a two-family structure that fronts on the Benson Avenue. It's one of four lots in this block that fronts on Benson, but has a backyard that touches Decatur. It's a little bit of a unique block, it's a skinny block, where there's four houses, or four properties that are that way. The rest of the block is lots that are either fronting on Benson, or fronting on Decatur, and it's very similar to what we're proposing here, but with the other ones, they're subdivided, and basically, it's a house with a little gap between the two houses. You have a space, and every house is individual in itself, where there's a space between the backyard and the, back of the house and the property line. It creates this little weird void area that really isn't usable space back there. A lot of these houses that are in that condition are much closer to the road than we're proposing with their porches and the houses themselves. We're doing a little bit of a unique proposal on this duplex, and doing a front and back. It'll look from Decatur and Benson like it's a single-family home, but they will share a common firewall at the back. It'll eliminate that weird wasted space between the two homes in the back, and allow the structures to look like single-family homes, but really be a duplex in nature. It'll spread out the load on the traffic demands by putting half the load on the Benson, half of it on to Decatur, instead of having all the parking demands on one side. We're doing off-street parking, so it shouldn't add to any on-street issues, but in order to do this, we need to have those two curb cuts, so we can have access both on Benson and Decatur. That's where we create this unique need for that variance. The other aspects that you're there, there's four houses there, this is being one of the four, the other three also front back and forth, but they create a unique situation where we're counting your front yard really as their backyard. So on the new survey, we, or the survey that was submitted, you can see that you have some properties with 40-plus feet, 21 feet as a front yard setback, but that's really their rear yard. So we're talking about lots 32, 38, and 40. So that's where you create that unique situation. If you remove those three from the situation, that 18-foot average front yard setback actually reduces down to even well below the 12 we're proposing, you're looking at 11 eight, and 11 foot, a six foot, those are all much less. And if you go even where you're not supposed to, according to the ordinance, you just go 200 feet, but if you look further down the street at the lots, 58, 56, 54, those all are very close, under 10 feet to the building, and the porches are less too.
One of your issues for justifying this is technically, the 18.220 is skewed, because we're really counting a number of backyards as our front yards, for calculating of what our front yard setback should be.
Yes, exactly. And when you look at, that's why there's no issue with these setbacks on the Benson side, because these four lots that go all the way through, that have backyards, they all front on to Benson, so there's no front yard setback on Benson, because they're all conforming and are unique. But most of this block is these houses, one house fronts on Benson, and then there's a separate house fronting on Decatur. And except for the three lots of 32, 38, and 40, and the one, the subject lot 34, they're the only ones that front on both Benson and Decatur. And one, and it's, the Decatur side happens to be all their backyards.
So talk a little bit about the, we need a front yard variance on the Decatur, because we're, the average is technically about an 18, and we're proposing a 12?
Yes. That's the issue, is we're proposing 12, which is the same that we're proposing on the Benson side, and is a very common setback for this neighborhood and this, for the city. If you look at the averages on all the other ones that are on Benson, we're talking 11.6, 11.9, 8.1, 11.3, these are all the front yard setbacks, and then you look over on Decatur, and we have 11.8, 6, 11, 10, some of them are two, but they're out of the area. The ones that are driving up the average and really skewing it is, we have a rear yard of 47.6, a 42, although we're knocking out the 47.6, because it's a high, we still have a backyard setback of 42, and a backyard setback of 21.8. So they're being counted as front yards, and really driving up that number. If those were eliminated front, you're basically down to a less than 12-foot, and we're trying to stay at the 12-foot to be common on both sides, to make a consistent-looking structure.
Front landscaping, we're about one and a half percent off, because of the 12-foot setback, and the skewing of the, of the numbers?
Yes, exactly. That, by having the narrow 12-foot setback, none of these other properties would be able to conform with that 50% if, if they were subject to it now, but they're all older homes that have been there. So it's something that, it's difficult, we're doing our best to comply with it, we got it to 48.5, but we're just a little bit shy of it.
How far back would you have to move that to comply?
Well, we'd have to move the porch back, and I have to do the math on that to figure that out. It wouldn't be adjusting the house at all, it'd just be adjusting the porch to get us more area there.
A couple feet, less than that?
I, let me do the math, maybe while I talk to Mr. Obelenas.
No problem.
On the curb cuts, once again, kind of a unique C1 situation, you're permitted one curb cut, we have two curb cuts, because we have two technical front yards, one on Benson and one on Decatur, so we don't meet the criteria?
Yes. That's the, and by having the two curb cuts, we're actually pulling more cars off the street, because now we have, we're able to load on both streets, as opposed to just having the one curb cut Oberon Benson. And we wouldn't be able to comply with that, because if we did a double wide, then we're into that whole landscape issue again.
Side yards, we're meeting side yards?
The front yard, which is five feet.
And we're maintained, so from an open-air, light space, we're in good shape?
From open air, we're consistent with the neighborhood, and we're allowing everyone to access the open air. By us actually eliminating that middle void space in between the two structures, it's, that's sort of like a wasted void that we caused if we had a subdivision, put two separate houses there. We're looking to do the one lot where we combine these houses, have a shared common firewall. It helps out with the fire, which is public safety, and then with the air, we're setting back more than the other properties on the street, for the most part. So it's, everyone's going to have access to the air, let the breezes come in, we're not blocking anything, really.
From a negative criteria point of view, there's technically two prongs. First prong is, is there any type of substantial detriment to the public good or the character of the neighborhood by granting these variances? And I'll have Mr. Obelenas talk about the deck variances as part of his architectural feature, on all these front yards, curb cuts, that type of thing. Do you see any type of substantial detriment to the, to the public good or the character of the neighborhood?
I don't see any detriment to the neighborhood, because this property is in conformance, most of the block is of this nature, of smaller houses that front on each street, where it's not, there's these couple oddballs that front on one side, and it's a backyard on the other. So we're, there's no detriment, it's a benefit to the community as a whole, is you becoming more consistent with that block. It's, you have a unique character for this block, where it's so narrow, basically only a standard Margate lot would be only one wide, so every, if everyone on this street was that way, but most of them are already these small lots. So there's no substantial detriment, it's not, not any other areas in the town have this uniqueness of being so tight to the street on each side, and the block being so narrow.
And once again, this second prong is, is there substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance? In this case, the MFF permits it. Do you think that there's any type of substantial detriment to the zone ordinance or zoning plan by the granting of these variances?
I do not, because we're, we're trying to, we're being dealt a unique situation by how narrow the block is, so it's not a detriment to the plan as a whole. We're actually following, it's being consistent with the way houses are on that block, and you can easily say, this is a unique situation. There's not other blocks that can do this, basically, there's three other properties that could possibly do this, but it's, they'd be consistent with that block. I don't see it being as a substantial detriment to the MF zone.
And from a density point of view, we're meeting the density, so we're not here for any type of a density variance?
No, we're definitely not. It's already a duplex, a multifamily, and that's what we're proposing. We're just proposing it in a manner that makes it very, it spreads it out, creates maybe a little less density, because you don't have the two families trying to load in off of Benson, you're actually spreading them out to load off each side.
I don't have any other questions of Mr. Chu, I would open up to the board, or I can switch over to Mr. Obelenas. And I'll have Mr. Chu work on his math problems, Mr. Patterson, while I'm asking questions of Mr. Obelenas.
Okay.
John, you've been sworn in. Would you put your qualifications on the record real quick?
Yes, licensed architect in New Jersey.
And how long have you been there?
With the board, we, we accept his qualifications.
Very good.
Thank you.
John, why don't you walk them through, you know, how you and Pete came up with the design, and what you wanted to do, and talk a little bit about the routing counts and the parking, and walk them through what we're doing here tonight.
Yeah, thank you. I'll start with the ground floor, and again, what we talked about was the front yard landscaping. It was a real balancing act between maintaining the parking strips, the concrete strips, with recommended widths of 30 inches each. We have a sidewalk from the stair, that's really not large, it's four feet wide, and the porch, these porches will have somewhat of a view toward the beach, so, you know, again, in that neighborhood, we like to maintain a decent porch, in this case, they're seven feet deep, not very big and not very small, we thought seven feet was a good balance. So between the porch depth, the requirements for the parking strips and the sidewalk, it kind of pushed us into that slightly less than it kind of pushed us into that slightly less than 50% front yard average. And, you know, hopefully you don't have to push that porch back and make it six feet. Because again, it's just, we're just going to balance out the inside, outside views and all the regulations requiring certain minimum requirements. So on the first floor, on the ground floor, we also show the proper parking amount, but I left space. We could have four cars there. We could have four legal spots. I just showed the three that were required. So technically, we can take another two cars off the street at the ground level in that empty spot next to the car drawn on the side plan. To complete that ground floor, we have an elevator vestibule, stairs from the front axis, the first floor. And under the stairs, we have an outdoor shower within the building outline that trains directly to a gravel pit. Oh, and again, what was that mention was, we do show a privacy fence on both sides that stops at the building setback. It's a real thin line, maybe hard to see, but there is a fence with, with the bushes along the side, at least on the top part of the drawing. So the fence is located on two sides at four feet high to separate the neighbor from, from our property. First floor is basically living, open plan, living, dining.
John?
Yes?
Would that fence go across the front or just on the side?
It just stops on the side. It doesn't go any further than the, the building itself.
But it doesn't, does it connect to the building?
Uh, no, it's just open.
Just on the side, okay.
Yes. So first floor is, is kitchen, dining, living area, stairs to the second floor. And the owner wanted to have a master suite on that living floor. It's, it's a good, the point is that often people like to have their, their living and bedrooms where it's almost like an apartment. They can walk out the bedroom and go get a cup of coffee. So we have a bedroom on that level. Elevator connects from the ground all the way up to the third floor. And a porch, again, a seven-foot porch on, on both sides. We created a very symmetrical plan where it's their mirror image of each other. Both equal spaces, equal rooms, you know, for efficiency use of space. On the second floor, we have three additional bedrooms. One is a suite, which could also be a master suite with its own porch, bedrooms in the middle and bathrooms, shared bathrooms. And then, so we have three bedrooms there, again, front and back, very symmetrical, elevator access. Third floor is a bedroom on each unit that faces the street, stair and elevator access, a bathroom that is shared. And we, what we call a playroom because there's no egress, it's underneath the roof line. So it couldn't be a bedroom. So we called it an open plan where it's open to the stair and open to the elevator. And of course, access to the bathroom is the playroom. And one bathroom.
John, can I, it's Mike Rosaldi, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What's the height of the bathroom ceiling on the third floor?
Well, we have a dormer that pops out.
I understand. That's why I'm asking that question.
That allows for the headroom, at the, at the far end, we anticipate about six and a half feet where it goes to the outside.
Okay, because what's the roof pitch there?
It says right there, five, I believe, five and 12.
All right, let's try this, let's try this. You have an eight-foot span and you have a 3.5 rise. What's the pitch?
Oh my God, you're putting me on the spot now.
Hmm, might happen.
I know, I know.
Now, I'm looking at them all over town, that's why I'm asking this question.
Yeah, yeah. So what was the question again?
I've got an eight-foot span and I got a 3.5 rise. I need 40 inches to get through a five.
Okay, and you want to know what that, what the angle is?
Yep.
Hold on a second.
Mike, are you saying with those numbers, it can't be a 512 pitch? Is that what you're saying?
That's wrong. I'm going to let John answer that.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm got my computer open here, so eight by 3.5.
And I gave you the full length with the overhang.
Just bear with me here.
I'm working.
You got everybody doing math tonight. We got Arthur Chu working on porch and we got John working on an overhang.
Yeah, it's got, it's got a, we have a slightly less than a five and 12 pitch with that.
All right.
It's just side maybe a cut, a fraction of, a fraction of that.
Six inches.
Six inch?
About six inches.
Is it, you know that for sure?
Pardon?
You know that for a fact?
I didn't draw it. I'm just taking the drawing in front of me and scaling it.
Yeah, no, I'm doing it on a computer, which is.
Yeah, well, I got an eight-foot span and I got a 3.5 rise. I got, and I need 40 inches and I only have 3.5. So I'm looking like, I don't know, just by your drawing, I can't answer that question.
So the difference is, is about?
Six inches.
No, I'd get like less.
Well, if it's only an inch, could you make it 512 in the, for the one that's being built? If you're saying it's only a fraction of an inch or an inch, you should be able to make it 512?
Yeah, yeah. We, to do that, we would have to lower that end a little bit, the, you know, the outside wall.
Yes.
Yeah, we can, we can lower that a little bit.
Are we going to be okay with ceiling height in there though for?
Well, we'll have, we'll have six feet.
We need seven foot by two.
Yeah, there's a couple of ways you can do this. If I find, I'll do, I don't have a building section here, and thank you for bringing this up. We can certainly push the bathroom in a little bit to create that height if we have to. I mean, we're not locked, you know what I'm saying? We're not locked into that. There's, there's some room to maneuver if we have to do that. And we'll show that in the, if we get this approved in a construction plan, that will show, you know, a building section and.
I mean, they're, they're always showing them, John, but then when I drive past, it's like, what happened there? Okay.
Well, I think if you, I think if you'll agree that the final plans will have the 512 pitch and then, and the proper ceiling height, we could go from there.
That, that's fine, Mr. Patterson. That'll be a condition of it, proper ceiling height, proper pitch.
Thank you.
Mr. Obalas, while you're talking about that, you know, Mr. Chu talked about the variances off strict of front yard. Would you address Roger's comments on the deck on the third floor and the purpose behind the deck and why, you know, we don't believe it's blocking light, air, and open space?
Correct. That deck is within that, the third, well, the third floor roof line. We have the pent roof that offers some privacy and it's located at the corner, pretty much at the corner. It wraps that, it wraps the side. But we tried to keep it instead within that roof line as much as we could and not have it jut out where it's overlooking someone else's yard. I mean, not that we can't, we can prevent that, but the idea was that it is protected by that pent roof and offers privacy.
Right. Let's talk a little bit about some of the positive criteria. The new properties of the safety from fire and flood are all going to be FEMA compliant?
Yes, yes, more, more than FEMA compliant. You know, we're well above that.
All mechanicals FEMA compliant?
Yes.
All side yards we're preventing light, air, and open space?
Well, we offer the 10 feet and the eight feet. So we do offer, again, obviously per code, but 10 feet is a good, is a good, good setback to allow the light and air, yes.
And even though you're the architect, you think that this combined versus what's there is a desirable visual environment?
Well, it's a much, it's a much improvement, I must say, to what's there and consistent with the level of new work going on in Margate. I mean, this home, I think, is up there with the quality of the curb appeal and obviously the efficiency of the plan. And again, I want to just emphasize the parking. We offer really four cars, you know, up the street. So it's a combination of the benefits of the, of the looks, consistent with Margate's, I think, you know, again, new style of homes with parking underneath. And, and I, and I know that there was an issue about the wall. We can certainly address that. And Pete and I have talked about that to create an initial thing, you know, either it's a penetration through the walls, windows, or opening up to one of those patios, you know, beneath. So that can be addressed pretty easily.
That was going to be my next question to address.
Are you talking about the, I can hear John?
Yes.
I'm sorry? Are you talking about the design standard Roger was speaking of?
Yes, yes, the, the length of wall that we're required to break it up. And we, we have a plan to break it up nicely. And we don't show it here, but Pete and I have, you know, discussed that. And that'll, that'll appear, you know, when we submit these plans.
That could be a condition that we have a, you would discuss it with Pete, you'd discuss with Roger so that everybody's can, is, is happy with the breakup on the design wall?
Yes.
Right, John, going back also to the negative criteria. In your opinion, the granting of the variance that Arthur's talked about and you've talked about, do you see any type of substantial detriment to the public good or substantial impact on the character of the neighborhood?
I do not. I believe it's, it's consistent with, with, we talked about that odd situation with the one street with all this, with all the rear yards and stuff. But I believe that this does offer value. It, it doesn't offer a detriment to the code. It's a home that's supposed to be at the shore with views to the ocean, with the decks, roof decks and front decks on the street. I believe it's a good addition to the Margate landscape.
Second, second prong talked about is there substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance? Do you see any type of substantial detriment to Margate zoning ordinance in this MF zone?
I, I do not. Again, it's a good balance between, you know, the variance in the front on Decatur and no variances on the Benson side. So I think it's a good balance between the, the two fronts and offers no detriment.
I don't have any other questions, Mr. Obalas. I would open up to the board and I would ask Mr. Chu if he could jump in and see if he has an answer for Mr. Patterson.
This is Roger, I have a question.
There's a lot of dimensions on the stuff I have are missing, so I had to back into them. I'm almost there.
Okay.
This is Roger, I just have, John, I want to confirm that you actually have four parking spaces for each unit, not three, correct?
Uh, yeah, you know, we're, we're following the 18-foot by nine-foot legal space. We do have additional space in the garage.
Okay. The, the spaces have to be labeled on, on any compliance plan if you're granted approval tonight?
Okay.
And also the, I know we're talking about the 80, 85-foot long wall, breaking it up with some bay windows and stuff like that. I think that's a great idea. The, the stucco portion of the wall on the garage level, you know, it's 85 feet of stucco. I think you need to add, address, maybe add some windows in there, whether they're opening, you know, windows that can open or they're permanent, you know, glass block. But something needs to break up that stucco also.
Yeah, we discussed them, again, you know, we, Pete and I, Pete Ramon and I discussed opening up a section of wall, actually, creating that, you know, the new trend now you see in a lot of the new buildings where there's an under, under the space patio, which is open to the side yard. And patio pavers so that you can be out there in inclement weather, you know, raining and such, and still be underneath the house. So that was one of the options we discussed in addition to, you know, window penetrations, whether it's a bay window or allowing light and air into that ground floor space.
Thank you.
Hey, Rich, this is Joe, I have a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
So we, you eliminated the space behind what were the duplexes, there's an open airspace there. Would we be able to put a deed restriction on this, making it so that you cannot subdivide and condo them?
Why?
Again, because if you, if you subdivide and condo them, you have no air behind there, there's no rear to the property.
Well, subdivide and condo are two completely different subjects, Joe.
Right, so condo, so condo, so there's no condo. A condo restriction.
I'm, I'm not.
That's my question, Rich.
They're not in here for a subdivision, they're, as far as I know, they're going to be condos.
Not a subdivision, I'm just saying that we put a, we put a deed restriction that it can't be condo.
I understand, Joe. You could, there's always buildings that are joined that are condoed. I, I don't quite get your point, but it's not, it's not a matter for us anyway.
Okay.
That's a form of ownership, a condominium. It shouldn't matter whether they're condoed or not. But as far as a subdivision, they, they, they wouldn't be able to do that without coming back before the board.
Hi, my name, can I ask a couple of questions?
It's not open to the public.
Here I am.
We'll get to you.
No, we're not open for the public yet. I'll let you know when we're ready to open to public.
Thank you.
Are you done, Brian?
Yes, we are.
I got that calculation now. It looks like four inches on each porch.
Thank you. That, that's, I was, it's, it's the minimus, thank you. Anything else from the board? Any questions, comments? Okay, I will open it up for public comment. Mark, would you please state your name and be sworn in?
Yes, Mark Alch. I am also here with my wife Sandy and a neighbor, a couple neighbors, Steve and Debbie.
Well, who's, who's going to speak?
Well, I have a couple of questions to ask and then my neighbors may have a couple.
They should all be sworn in. So state your name and address and let each person state their name and address and then Leo will swear you in.
Great, Mark Alch, 20 South Decatur Avenue.
Deborah Selinger, 20 South Benson Avenue.
Anyone else?
Is it just to tell you?
No, that's okay.
So all right, let's get you sworn in. Mr. Alch and Ms. Selinger, please raise your right hand each where affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so you two are the only sworn, the only two who should be speaking right now.
Well, right, that's correct.
Go ahead.
Okay, someone had mentioned that there was a space between the houses on Benson. As far as I know, that there is no space between the houses, that it's basically a duplex, but both of them are side by side with no additional space. So I just wanted to correct that.
Are you talking about the, the property that's here tonight or are you talking about a neighborhood property?
No, 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 the, the house that we're talking about, the proposed property.
Yeah, there's no space between them.
And the house?
There's a common firewall.
Sorry, I got to them.
There's a common firewall, okay.
But let me just jump in, Mr. Alch. I think what Mr. Chu was saying, as you went down the block, the houses at the other end of the street that are already subdivided, they have spaces between the back of the Benson Avenue houses and the back of the Decatur Avenue houses that have a little bit of space between them because they're both fee simple, one's facing Benson and one's facing Decatur. So I think that that was what Mr. Chu was addressing, that there's voided spaces as you get down the rest of the block and some of those areas, some of those homes, one facing Benson, one facing Decatur.
Okay, then I didn't understand him as far as what he was saying. He also said something about possible other variances. You know, it would have been a lot easier, I guess, for laypeople to understand if he was showing exactly what he was talking about. Because it was kind of hard to understand what he was saying and we didn't see what he was talking about. I don't know if that could be shown or not.
I don't think there's any variances proposed that weren't on the application that was available to you. Nothing else proposed. In fact, some, some have been eliminated.
All right. And then you were talking about parking. Right now, there's two parking spaces on Decatur. Both, I'm assuming both of those parking spaces will be going, is that correct?
Each, each house, one on Benson, will have four on-site parking spaces. The house facing Decatur will have four on-site parking spaces.
Okay, but is there going to be two driveways going into the property on Decatur?
No.
No, one, one driveway on each side. One driveway on Benson, one driveway on Decatur. We need a variation because we're only permitted one driveway.
All right, but is that going to be in the center? Right now, there's two parking places on Decatur for that whole property. Right now, there's two parking places on Decatur for that whole property, so are they going to put the driveway in the center of the property or is it going to be on one side or the other?
Mr. Obelenis or Mr. Chu, can you jump in and answer that?
It's right in the middle, there's eight foot of space on the beachside and 10 foot of parking space on the base.
All right, so that's going to eliminate the two parking spaces on Decatur.
Right, the two will become four, so the two that were eliminated now become four parking spaces.
He's talking about street.
Right, you're two onsite, you're two on-street parking spaces that are there now, yes.
Will be gone.
That driveway will now facilitate a new single-family home, a new home approved with four onsite parking spaces for that home.
Is there any way to move that driveway to one side or the other to at least keep an additional parking space on Decatur, which is a very busy street?
There is not a way to do that without having to apply for another variance with offsetting the house because the driveway leads into the garage, so there's two parking spaces in the garage and two parking places in the driveway. We'd have to offset, there's requirements for side yard setbacks, we have to be eight foot off of one side and 10 foot off the other, that's how those numbers are developed. If we reset the house to make it 16 feet, it would be a two-foot side yard on one side and then we'd have 16 on the other, if that makes sense.
16's not a parking space anyway.
Right, so then it'd be a zero yard setback and an 18-foot parking space.
Right.
And that wouldn't be permitted.
Okay, when is the start date as far as taking down the house?
I don't know what that is, I mean, there's, if the variances are approved tonight, there's a 45-day appeal period, so, you know, it could be a month and a half, two months from now.
Okay, and do we know who the builder is?
I don't think these are questions that's before the board, that's, it's not being discussed here, that's not a planning board decision.
Okay, how about pilings or cinder block foundation?
That's yet to be determined yet. Mr. Romano has engaged me about determining the soil bearing capacity, but we haven't yet to determine that.
Okay, so when will that be determined?
When they're ready.
Well, that'll be, he has to determine if he's going to get these variance approvals, if he gets these, then we'll go forward. I mean, in all likelihood, there probably is going to be piling and then most likely he would probably do vibration monitoring, things of the nature, things that I'm very familiar with, there would be no danger to your house.
Well, that's what you're saying, I tend to disagree because pilings were put in two doors away from me and...
Let me interrupt, I'm trying to give you as much leeway as I can, but again, this is not a matter before the planning board, so we have no say in it to make them put in pilings or not put in pilings.
Okay, how about water runoff?
You would have to discuss with the builder himself to protect yourself.
Okay, how about water runoff?
There'll be, ordinances within Margate require all drainage to be directed towards the streets, so the water will be directed towards Decatur and Benson and not towards your property.
Okay.
That's the city code, that has, they have no say in that, that's the city code.
City, okay, so you don't know whether it would actually be a runoff as opposed to tied into a sewer line or something?
You're not allowed to do that, it would have to be roof gutters and runoff overground.
Right, that's what I'm basically talking about.
Yeah.
You can't tie it over line.
It requires them to direct the water to the streets.
I see. Do you have questions then?
Yeah, I have a question, will the end of the house come out so far that it will cover my deck?
Which property is yours?
20 South Benson.
So, are you, the house immediately to the bayside?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, but it backs on Benson and our deck is on Decatur.
So, your lot 38, your building is 21.8 off, so that means, and we're going to be 12 off, so there's going to be about 9.8 feet of building, you're going to have about two feet of your deck sticking out in front of the house.
So, that means my air is completely blocked on my deck except for two feet.
Debbie, were you 20 South Benson or 20 Decatur?
And you will still get that southeast breeze.
Let me just, Debbie, what, are you 20 South Benson or 20 South?
We're 20 South Benson and the back of our house is on Decatur.
On Decatur, correct, okay.
Your lot 38.
Right, your lot 38, I didn't know which deck you were talking about, your front deck facing Benson or your rear deck?
We have no, we have no upper deck facing Benson, we have an upper deck facing air.
Right. All right, so I think Arthur then answered your question.
That's the house with the press driveway that runs across the whole...
Two feet of air.
No, you have two feet of view.
And our setback is a proper side yard setback.
There are also on the side, there's a 10-foot setback there, so that there's 10-foot of space to the property line plus then your property setback off to there, so you have, there's still ample space in there to get air.
Two feet?
We're 10 feet off your side yard property line.
Right, two, there's 10 feet between the houses.
Between the houses, but then you're...
They're just...
Your house is coming up to, two feet to the end of my deck.
Right, there's still ample space in there for air.
It's going to do the same thing, and again, they're here for that 12-foot setback, and if the board approves it, that's what it will be, if the board says it should be 21 feet, then it won't.
If I may add, comment as you're...
John?
Yeah, on Benson, the building setback could have been nine feet, I believe, which is a prevailing legal setback, which would have been even three feet even closer to the street, we set it back to 12 feet.
What? No, we're talking about the Decatur side.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were still on Benson.
Yeah, not Benson. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Anyone else in the public? Public portion is closed. Would you, Leo, would you read the motion with the additions we put in?
Yes, this is a C variance application, so someone needs to make a motion for variance relief for the following C variances, a front yard setback to the building along Decatur of 12 feet, or 21.4 feet is the required prevailing minimum setback, a front yard landscaping variance on the Decatur side of 48.5%, where 50% with the steps is the minimum required. Third-floor decks aren't permitted at this location, so they need a variance for a third-floor deck, one for each unit, and the curb cuts are proposing, one 18-foot curb cut on each side, on the Benson side and on the Decatur side, so that needs a variance. There is technically a design waiver because the buildings, there's something in our ordinance that says no building shall measure longer than 80 feet on any plane, so that's technically a design waiver, but one of the conditions is that the applicant shall, you know, break up the long walls, including at the stucco level with some architectural features to be approved in the discretion of Mr. McLaren. The final plans presented will have the proper pitch and ceiling height as discussed with Mr. Obelenis on the record, and the applicant shall label the parking spaces on the plan and any other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report that haven't otherwise been addressed, and the applicant will comply with any representations it made during the course of the hearing.
We concur, that is correct.
I'll make that motion, Rich. Tom, second? Can I have your second?
I'll second it.
Tom Collins?
This is kind of a unique property because it fronts on two streets, which is rare in Margate, but it does happen. I think that considering the need for redevelopment in that area, that bringing something new like this in is probably not a bad idea, I think it shows a lot of value to the neighborhood. Mr. Chu explained it pretty well, and there really is no detriments to the neighborhood because of the big, large back lots, so I vote in favor.
Clem Wozleski?
Well, generally, with a clear lot, which is what we'll have after demolition, I generally see few reasons for variances. However, some, maybe not all, of the variances requested here are reasonable. But I have a concern that this project really does not meet the specifics or the spirit of the design standards of our land use ordinance. Perhaps with some of the many changes that have been discussed, it could be improved, but without being able to see and review such things, I have to vote no.
Richard Patterson?
I have to agree with Tom here with everything he said, but I do want to address one of the neighbors' concerns. With the size of your backyard on Decatur Avenue, anything that's built in this lot is going to impact your view from your deck, so no matter what is built here, it's going to impact your view, so we can't stop building on this lot. So, following up on what Tom said, I agree with him and I vote yes.
Michael Cristaldi?
This is a toughie, I'm not crazy about the design, you know, we're, what did they say, we were wide, 24-wide and we're 39-wide, it's not, not what Margate needs. I have to agree with Clem, that we've got to come up with something different, we've got a blank canvas here as we always say, and we're in here with four variances, so I've got to vote no with Clem.
Jim Gallantino?
It's tough, I mean, they showed the hardship with the front yard setback and the conditions of the lot, I mean, I think Brian did a good job with questioning his client on the hardship and the detriment and the benefit. Those houses, I don't know how we're going to make something that could fall into suitable that's going to meet all the demands of that area, but basically, most of all the yards are concrete and they front on two streets, I think that just that alone is a hardship. I vote yes.
Remy Pelosi?
I'm going to concur with Jim Gallantino, and I vote to approve this project.
Michael Richmond?
A couple of things, I do like the design where it actually looks like a single-family home on each side of the street, and I do think it is a hardship that when you get the average setback on Decatur Avenue, there, you know, a lot of those homes in the vicinity or backyard, so I think that does skew the setback. I understand the design standard thing, but I can think of many ways that things can be done that were suggested with the windows, even putting a band of ASAC down the middle between the two floors would help out, so I am going to vote yes.
The application passes with five in favor and two opposed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next case is Dennis and Kimberly Forte, 300 North Quincy Avenue, Lot 518, Lot 9.03, located in the S-40 district, seeking C variance relief for front yard setbacks, building hazard, possibly others, in order to renovate the structure. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman and Board members. My report is dated September 20th, 2020, in regard to Dennis Forte, 300 North Quincy Avenue, Lot 518, Lot 9.03. Again, it is within the S-40 zone, it's in FEMA zone elevation eight, so they have 11 feet to go to the bottom unless they want to put it on top of the garage. Application is deemed complete and it's a hardship variance plus a substantial benefit variance. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct a roof over an existing porch that was expanded in 2013. The roof does not meet the prevailing front yard setbacks for both Quincy Avenue and for Amherst Avenue by a combined total of about seven inches. The ordinance allows for four inches for stone face, but that is not the case here. Two variances are being requested, there are permitted projections along, there are permitted projections along Amherst Avenue, and another permitted projection is proposed along Quincy Avenue that do not require variances. Page two is a zoning chart for the S-40 zone, highlighted in the variance column, there are two setback variances. Bottom of page two, section two, are the documents reviewed to produce this document, continued on the top of page three. Section three are the variances required, there is follows, minimum front yard setback for the porch, Amherst Avenue, whereas 15.5 feet is the prevailing front yard setback, 15 feet exists and 15 feet is proposed. This is about a six-inch variance, it's an expansion of a non-conforming setback. Variance number two, minimum front yard setback for the porch on Quincy Avenue, whereas 12.5 feet is prevailing front yard setback, 12.4 feet exists and 12.5 feet is proposed, this is about a one-inch variance. Again, it's an expansion of a non-conforming setback. You know, you hate writing a report like this, but technically they need a variance, or two variances. My comments are in the report, I'm not going to delve on those. Recommendations are in section six. Again, just complying with the landscape and street tree requirements for this project is pretty much all that we're asking, and I turn it over to the applicant.
Chris, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, Board members, my name is Christopher Pacenda, I'm here tonight in representing my, representing my client, Dennis Forte, also here tonight with Peter Weiss, who as you all know is a registered architect who has appeared before the board on numerous occasions. Mr. Forte is the owner of 300 North Quincy Avenue, it's on the corner of Quincy and Amherst Avenues, it is Block 518, Lot 9.03. Property is 55 by 80, 4,400 square feet in size. Property is located in the S-40 zoning district which permits residential uses, and the current use of the property is in fact residential. We're here tonight seeking variance relief in order to construct, establish and maintain a needed addition to an existing single-family residence for a family living year-round here in the city of Margate. The renovation is comprised of two modest additions, as Roger said, it's a roof over an existing Quincy Avenue front porch, a bay window along Quincy Avenue, and an architectural enhancement or projection on the Amherst Avenue elevation. The renovations trigger two de minimis variances due to the prevailing front yard setback encroachments. yard setback encroachments combined less than a foot. Mr. Weiss will explain the architectural plans and the extent of the variances in more detail, and at this time, I would call Mr. Weiss to be sworn to provide his name and address for the record.
Mr. Weiss, just your name and address. I'll get you sworn in.
Peter Weiss, 101 North Washington Avenue, Margate.
Please raise your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Weiss has appeared before the board on numerous occasions. I would like to have him recognized as an expert for architectural purposes?
We accept his credentials.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weiss, you prepared the architectural elevation and floor plans for the Forte residence that's on file for this application, correct?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the site?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the surrounding and neighboring properties?
Yes, I am.
And you're familiar with the city zoning ordinance?
Very much.
Very good. And can you describe the architectural status of the current residence and the proposed architectural enhancements for the board?
Okay, the site's currently occupied by a two-story house. It's four-bedroom, so, you know, by Margate standards, it's a little on the small side. It's sitting on a corner lot. There's currently a front entrance and porch at the corner of the property. The, there was previously an extension to the front deck, so the front deck extends about 32 and a half inches out towards Quincy Avenue from the front of the house, and that portion of the deck is currently uncovered. I'll just keep going. Also, when the house was originally designed, which we did, the three columns that support the second floor were at the face of the porch, and the porch was pretty small. So, at some point, a previous owner, I guess, extended the porch out. So, now the three columns that sit there are basically in the middle of the deck, which renders the deck pretty much unusable. So, what we proposed was basically a facelift, if you will, on the two street sides, Quincy and Amherst. And part of that includes creating a roof over the deck that protrudes beyond the face of the building, but also we're going to take the three columns that are there and extend them out to the face of the deck, so then the whole deck will be usable. But getting into the variances a little bit, there's actually a typo on my, what do you call it, setback schedule, because I'm showing the setback on Amherst as being 15.5 feet when it should have been 15 feet even. So, that changes the average setback to 15.7. So, what that means is we're ultimately requesting a variance about eight inches on Amherst and what amounts to about one inch on the Quincy Avenue side, which, as mentioned, are both de minimis, in my opinion.
Okay. And can you describe in more detail the projection on the Amherst Avenue side?
Well, we're just, we're not actually adding any projections. We're just basically doing a facelift and changing the trim and adding shutters and that sort of thing. So, the base of the building doesn't really change on that side volumetrically, if you will.
Got you. All other of the bulk requirements are met?
Yes.
And there's no change in building coverage or height, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And in terms of the variance support, this is a corner lot with two front yards and two side yards?
Yes.
Okay. And we're working with the existing structure. In other words, this is not new construction. We're working within the confines of what exists, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But for the eight-inch and one-inch expansion, everything else is staying within the footprint of the building, the existing footprint?
Yes.
Okay. And in terms of the C-2 variance support, is it your opinion that the architectural enhancements or the facelift, as you call it, would result in the desirable visual environment?
Absolutely, yes.
And is that one of the purposes of zoning?
Yes.
Any change in the light air or open space?
No.
And is this an appropriate location for a continued residential use?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. And having shown the advancement of numerous purposes of zoning, we have to also satisfy the negative criteria. In your opinion, does the application satisfy the negative criteria as well?
Yes.
So, there will be no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan or the zoning ordinance?
Correct.
And there's no substantial impairment to the public good?
Correct.
Okay. And in fact, it's your opinion that the additions would actually be a benefit to the good, correct, a benefit to the public good, correct?
Correct.
Does any public, does the benefit to the public good outweigh any perceived detriment?
Yes.
Okay. Have you reviewed Mr. McLarnan's review memo?
Yes.
And do we agree with Mr. McLarnan's comments and requirements and conditions?
I believe so. And I did want to discuss the street tree question or comment. There's currently a fairly mature tree on both streets. There's also, in addition, there's also a fairly large and mature cedar tree that's right up against the house. And there's also another tree that was sort of planted, I guess, fairly recently out on the lawn towards the corner. So, at this point, there's four trees on the lot, three of which are fairly substantial. So, we would like to not have to add any more trees, I guess, to the site is what we're asking.
Thank you. I have nothing else for Mr. Weiss. I would open him up to questions from the board or the public.
Pete, how close are those trees to the curb? The ones that aren't on the curb?
Well, they're in the governor's, oh, there aren't any.
The cedar tree?
Yeah, the cedar's pretty close to the house. I don't know. Might be five feet off, four or five feet off. And the other one's kind of in the middle of the lawn towards the corner.
We're looking for canopies along the streets. Yeah?
Mr. Chairman, it's Roger. I was out there the other day. There is one room, or there is room for one additional tree on Quincy Avenue that would not interfere with any utilities or anything.
Well, I'd like to go with Roger's recommendation.
And I've consulted with my client. If it's the board's preference and Roger's recommendation, we will certainly meet that obligation. And just for the record, Mr. Forte is in the audience. He's certainly free to chime in if needed, but...
Pete, I'll go in first.
I'm sorry. I don't really think I, I don't think I need him to testify. I think I'm okay with where we are, but if you have questions of him as the owner, we would certainly offer him.
I don't think anybody does. I think you can proceed.
That wraps up my, that wraps up my application. We believe we satisfy the positive criteria and the negative criteria for this application. We would ask for your review and consideration and an approval, given the very, very, very small nature of the relief being requested.
Yeah, board have any questions or comments? I'll open it up for, I'd like to open it up for public comment. If anyone, please state your name. Public portion is closed. If there's no other comments in the board, would you...
Rich, I have, I have one quick question of Roger.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yes.
How close is that tree going to be to the corner?
Which one, the new one?
The new one.
Mm-hmm. I think it's going to be down closer to the driveway. We're on the other side of the driveway, so it won't be near the corner at all, because there's a stop sign. It's out of place also.
Okay, so it's not going to block any traffic or...
No, it's not going to be anywhere near the corner. There's no room near the corner.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else? All right, Leo, please read a motion.
Okay, motion, it's a, someone needs to make a motion for C-variants relief. There's two C-variants, variances, a front yard setback to the porch along Amherst of 15 feet, where 15.8 feet is the required setback, and then a front yard setback to the porch along Quincy of 12.5 feet, where 12.4 feet is the requirement. And then the one condition will be to add an additional tree along Quincy Avenue and the governor's strip, and then any other conditions in Mr. McLarnan's report unless otherwise modified. And then, to the extent the applicant made any representations, I'll comply with those.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Tom Collins?
Again, this is another corner case. Corner cases always drive us nuts, but this is so de minimis, we're talking about inches. It's a shame they even had to come and present this, but I think Chris did a nice job in making the presentation, and as long as the tree is down away from the corner, I think adding another tree to the streetscape is really good, so I vote in favor.
Clem Wozleski?
We really have to find another way to handle these simple applications. This is certainly going to be a more attractive presentation than, as exists, and I certainly vote in favor.
Richard Patterson?
I see no negatives. I only see positives here. It's so de minimis, it doesn't make any difference that it be a much better-looking house. I vote yes.
Michael Cristaldi?
As Mr. Weiss called it, he did a great job on this, making a facelift, so we're going to have to call him doctor. I vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
I concur with the rest of the board. I vote yes.
Margaret Gubernalty?
I agree with the other board members. It's a modest addition. It's a really nice addition to the home, and I vote in favor of the application.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I don't see any detriment to the neighborhood, and I think it's an asset. I'm going to vote yes.
The application passes with seven in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you all very much. It was a pleasure seeing you all. I appreciate your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. My next case is Davco Construction, LLC, North Thurlow Avenue, lot 220, lot 1, located in the S-40 district, seeking variance relief for front yard setbacks, third-floor deck, full fence, and possibly others in order to construct a new single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLarnan?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I'm sorry. Again, I need to recuse myself on this case.
Don't be sorry.
I am sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. My report is based on the application of Davco Construction, Inc., 15 North Thurlow Avenue, block 220, lot 1.01, within the S-40 zoning district. C-variants is in planning and zoning report. It's a hardship variance because it's a corner property, and it's a substantial benefit variance as well. Background is as follows: the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct a new flood-compliant dwelling in the city of Margate. The lot is part of a subdivided lot that was, that received approval as a buyright subdivision. The lot was not subdivided equally, and the wider lot is the interior lot. The third floor yet again does not meet the definition of the land use ordinance, and the plans are inadequate as the variance is not requested, yet the architect is familiar with the ordinance. The variances are identified and commented on below. The zoning schedule on page two indicates all the zoning requirements for the zone. I actually removed two variances, and I'll explain later. Continuation of the zoning chart is on page three. Section two on page three are the documents reviewed. Again, the latest plan was dated July 15th, 2020, from Mr. Ovelinas. Waiver has requested a copy of an area map showing all lots within 200 feet of the property. Again, accompanying the application is a copy of the subdivision plan, and there actually is a 200-foot property map on that plan. The two variances that I removed are the front yard porches facing Winchester Avenue, and the reason is they were in line with the building, so they do not figure into the calculations of setbacks to porches. So, the variance is required, or as follows: front yard setback for the building Winchester Avenue, whereas the prevailing setback is 11.3 feet, and the proposed setback is seven feet. Front yard setback to the fence, whereas the prevailing setback is 11.3 feet, and the proposed setback is two feet. Side yard setback for the principal structure, whereas the minimum side yard setback is eight feet, and the proposed setback to the outdoor kitchen, which is attached to the principal structure, is four feet. By definition, a accessory structure attached to the building counts as the principal structure. Kind of de minimis in this case. Variance number four is a pool clearance, whereas the minimum required clearance to any structure is three feet, and one foot is proposed to a portion of the pool, not the entire pool. Number five is a half-story third floor, whereas the half-story shall be fully contained within the roof of the second floor, and the proposal does not comply with the ordinance. Again, this is section 175-2, definitions. Waiver has requested, again, the copy of an area map. Again, I already mentioned that. My comments are as follows: the waiver for an area map may be granted without detriment as the subdivision plan shows this requirement, as does a certified tax list. Story, the half-definition or the story, the definition of a half-story is shown on item number two. The half-story shall be fully contained within the roof of the second floor and having the permitted dormers and exceptions for elevators and stairways where applicable. That is not the case in this application. Clearly, the application does not meet the definition of the ordinance and completely ignores the intent of the ordinance. The plan should be revised, and I recommend that if a variance for the third floor is not be requested, the application be tabled. Comment number three: the required front yard setbacks along the porch and second floor are not being met. They are not to be included with any setback calculations if the building setback variance is granted, and if the decks were to remain where they are and the building pushed back, they would not, they would need a variance. So, in essence, if the building gets pushed back and the decks stay where they are, you do need a variance for the decks. The required front yard setbacks to the deck is not being met based on the calculated prevailing setbacks. The proposed second-floor deck is non-conforming setback and requires a variance. Again, actually, item number three, comment number three addresses comment number four. The minimum side yard setbacks are not, are being met and exceeded except for the outdoor kitchen below. So, the building itself meets the side yard setback, but because of the outdoor kitchen, it is not by definition. The front yard setback variance requested to the porch is grossly out of place and unjustified per land lease. Actually, scratch that one, item 7. Number nine: the pool clearance requirement is being neglected and requires a variance. The landscape wall has no dimensions, elevations, and does not meet the pool clearance requirements. I don't know what it is. Is it a raised bed? Based on a previous inspection, I presume that's what it is. The required landscaping and shrub count is not being met. Street tree exact, street tree exact location shall be shown. The ones on Winchester Avenue are too close together. The front steps, they extend past the front of the porch, and I've noticed on some inspections of similar steps that they're being enclosed and used as storage facilities. I think this front step should be, remained open below the steps to, and not being enclosed and not provide storage, as storage structures are not permitted within the front yard setback. A little confusing on the, on the dimensions and measurements on the plans. They're both in feet and inches, and also some are in feet and tenths of a foot. I just want to make sure that they are the same. foot. I just want to make sure that they are the same. The pool equipment location is not shown on a site plan. It's unlabeled as site plan. Exterior wall on Winchester Avenue looks like a solid wall with no architectural features and does not look like the front of a house. Again, typically on corner properties, the planning board has requested some projections and relief to make both fronts look like front yards or front, front facades of a pro-, of a house. Again, the recommendations are in the report and I turn it over to the applicant.
Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicant. Davco, with me tonight is Mr. David D. Leonardo, who is the principal of Davco, along with John O'Valenis, who is the architect.
Before you start, could you, could you possibly have Mr. O'Valenis sworn in? I have a question for him.
Not to do that right now. John, would you raise your right hand if you'd sworn earlier tonight? Mr. Manos will swear you in and Mr. Patterson, Chairman, will ask you some questions, I assume.
John, please just state your name and address again for the record.
John, you're mute.
John O'Valenis, 102 South Eighth Street, Vineland, New Jersey.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I will.
Thank you.
Where do we stand on the third floor, John?
I'm glad, I'm glad you asked me. I know that it's been a struggle for me. This is my, you know, my moment here. It's been a struggle trying to interpret the rule, you know, and I understand the rule.
What are, what have you presented? Have we, did we get something today? Did we get it yesterday? Did you revise these plans?
Well, here's, I did revise the elevations to show that what I believe conformed. Now, being in this Zoom environment, I'm used to appearing in person, obviously, and we would present, you know, something that was not presented before. I think, what do they call it legally? And Eric helping out here, when you present something at the hearing, it's an evidence?
An exhibit?
An exhibit, right? So in lieu of exhibits personally, I emailed revised drawings that showed a different version of that third floor.
When did you do that?
I did it, it was either yesterday or the day before yesterday. And I think you scolded me about sending drawings to the members without going through Roger first. But I know I could send to Palmer two plans. I believe it was A, seven, it was the elevation. So A, I'm sorry, A, A four and A five, I believe.
Well, I, I'm, I have to consider that as a revision that we haven't had time to review and the public hasn't had their 10 days to review. And for that reason, we're not going to hear the case tonight. We're gonna put it off.
All right, John, go ahead.
If I may say, I understand that, that, that legal detail. I believe that, I've gone through several, I've gone through several iterations with Roger trying to educate me on this roof regulation and I believe previous projects, I did it. I was able to make the modifications and make that roof line work. I guess the hope was that in this project, I can do the same thing. You know, this roof can be made conforming to the rule. And if that became a condition of this meeting, that I have every confidence to be able to do that.
No, I think it's too much of a difference for us to hear it.
Well, I don't, there's a difference, there's, I don't think it's a difference. I think it's a matter of, don't look at the third floor for this meeting. You know, we're looking for variance for the front yard.
We're not gonna hear the case tonight.
Would, understanding that, when you say you're not going to hear it, one of the things we were a little bit concerned about is, as John indicated, the ability to go forward perhaps knowing that whatever third floor interpretation exists, the building and zoning officials would not give us a permit either for building or for zoning unless that third floor complied. And Mr. D. Leonardo is on the call. The Zoom meet will adhere to whatever conditions are put on, that the third floor must comply with Mr. McLaren and Mr. Gallantino.
From what's been presented, what needs to be done and for that reason, we're not gonna hear the case.
Okay, I understand that. And accepting that, is this a case that we can put on for the October meeting without the need to renotice or readvertise?
Leo?
Yeah, and, and just to echo what Rich is saying, that as I, everyone knows legally the plans have to be on file 10 days in advance of the meeting. I got, I saw some plans coming in. It was, I thought it was after four o'clock yesterday. I don't have the exact emails in front of me and I also didn't notice that the board was looped in and there was some back and forth, which we should avoid that going forward. The professionals should discuss things with each other and leave the, the board out of it, but I, I didn't, I didn't see that everyone was copied, but that's just a side note. But given it's something as significant as a third floor and these are changing the day before the meeting and aren't, and aren't, aren't on file, you know, it doesn't give the, the public an opportunity to see. The, the board is probably going to be confused frankly. So I would just echo what Rich is saying that, that, you know, and I agree with this position. As far as the October 29th meeting, I certainly have no issue making that formal announcement and if the board has no objections, I'll say if anyone's on the line for the Davco Construction application, which is 15 North Thurlow, Block 220, Lot 1, that is going to be adjourned till October 29th, to the October 29th hearing, 6:30 PM, likely to be on the go-to meeting application. Check the website for the updated login information. The applicant won't be required to, to readvertise and renotice so long as their, their, their current notice is sufficient to cover what they ultimately are asking for. And I would just suggest that the applicant get revised plans in and on file at least 10 days prior.
Mr. Goldstein?
Look, I, I obviously wanted to go forward tonight, as did the applicant and time being a factor, an important factor. We, you know, know that it's most important to work with the board and not against the board, but I would just like to note a formal objection that I do believe we're prepared and ready to go forward and to the extent that, you know, we're anyway prejudiced, we just want to reserve those rights. However, having said that, we understand that the board's not going to hear it. We'd rather have it heard correctly in October than denied this evening. So in that case, we would accept what you said, Mr. Chairman, and what Mr. Manos said and we'll, we'll deal with it ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you.
Next case is Roman Rosinski, 40 North Essex Avenue, Block 206.01.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Joel Schwartz loves, is Joel Schwartz on behalf of the applicant?
Joel?
I'm, I'm done. Sorry?
It's not your turn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So there. Block 206.01, Lot 10, located in the S-25 district seeking a C variance relief for combined side yard setback, landscaped area and possibly others in order to expand the existing first floor deck and add a second floor deck. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren, would you read your report, please?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board Members. Report is based on the application of Roman Rosinski at 40 North Essex Avenue, Block 206.01, Lot 10, located within the S-25 zoning district. Hardship variance case and a substantial benefit variance case. Background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct a new second floor deck and to expand an existing first floor porch fronting on Essex Avenue. The property is on the south corner of Essex and Winchester Avenues, having two front yards and two side yards. The addition creates variances and expands on other nonconforming issues. Page two is the zoning chart. The last column is the variance column and there are three variances items that are highlighted. The documents reviewed on section two on page two. Flipping over to page three, section three, the variances required are as follows. Combined side yard setback for the first floor porch, whereas the minimum combined side yard setback is 37% of the lot width or 16.7 feet minimum. 15.9 feet exists for all, for at the deck and 12 feet is proposed. Again, this is section 175, Schedule B1, Attachment 4, expansion of an existing nonconforming setback. The second variance required is combined side yard setback to the second floor deck, whereas the minimum combined side yard setback required a 37% of the lot width or 16.7 feet minimum and 12 feet is proposed. This is not an expansion of this, as the second floor deck does not exist. So this is a brand new variance. Landscape coverage, whereas 35% is the minimum landscape coverage, is required, which is the inverse of the lot coverage. 34% exists, 33% is proposed. Again, these numbers are based on the survey and extrapolated from Peter Weiss's plan as well. Waivers requested checklist is incomplete. I do believe that Mr. Schwartz has submitted the incomplete items, so this application has been deemed complete. Comments, the survey submitted has cut off at the bottom. Again, that was revised and resent and approved. Aerial photos show a grass governor's strip and has since been removed and replaced with concrete pavers. Street view photos show a grass governor's strip around 2013. Again, grit, concrete pavers were a permitted substitute for grass at the time of this, before this application. The combined side yard setbacks are required to be 16.7 feet and are being reduced from the existing 15.9 feet to 12 feet and requires a variance for each, for both the first floor and the second floor decks. The landscape coverage, as I explained before, is self-explanatory. The front yard landscape coverage requirements are being met. The property is subject to the landscape requirements in Margate's ordinance, in particular to the street trees and shrub count. The narrow governor's strip cannot support the street trees and if required, they should be behind the sidewalk. A grass governor's strip I have is required, I should say that should be considered, again, because the pavers were put in within the last seven years and, and were allowed. But that's the board's discretion. The combined side yard setback deficiencies are clearly caused by the garage being a tenth of a foot from the property line on both sides. You take that garage out of the equation and we're talking no variances. The area is nearly devoid of street trees and again, my recommendations are standard and as shown on page four and five. And I turn it over to the applicant.
Now, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joel Schwartz loves, Joel Schwartz, on behalf of the applicant, Roman Rosinski. And I want to thank the panel and the chairman for the opportunity to present this application for the variance. We're gonna be requesting Peter Weiss testify. Peter Weiss is the architect, the designer of the plan associated with the expansion of the first floor deck and the creation of the second floor deck. I would respectfully request that Mr. Weiss be admitted as an expert. I understand he's testified before this panel before.
Yeah, we've accepted his credentials.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I call Peter Weiss at this time?
I'm here.
Mr. Weiss?
Mr. Weiss.
I just have to swear a man again real quick, just because it's a new application. Pete, if you could just state your name and business address, I'll get you sworn in.
Peter Weiss, 101 North Washington Avenue, Margate.
And please raise your right, your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Weiss, could you please describe the project that we're doing here at 40 North Essex, Block 206.01, Lot 10?
Certainly. So the existing property, it's a corner property occupied by, you know, what's effectively a one and a half story house. There's an existing front porch on the first floor, which is about eight by 16, I believe, and currently has an awning over it. So, and also as mentioned, there's an attached garage in the back corner, which is about point one feet or about one inch off the property line on the two sides, which ultimately is the reason we're here tonight. I think it's a result of that attached garage. So what we propose to do is widen the existing front porch to about 24 and a half feet and then add a second floor deck above that. And originally, we drew it up with the deck kicked off to the right side, which if we had done that, we wouldn't be here tonight because we wouldn't have met the combined side yard setback requirement. So, but doing that, the building looked very, you know, lopsided and off-center, so we decided to, you know, kick the porch back to be centered on the house, which looks much better. But because of that, we're now encroaching into the combined side door setback, whereas, you know, we had point one feet on the west side and we have basically 11.9 feet on the south side. So, but in spite of that, I mean, the minimum setback on the south side would be five feet and we're proposing 11.9, so we're much in excess of the minimum setback. And that's about, oh, as far as the landscaping, we did add a grass strip in the driveway, which essentially compensates for the area of the, of the porch that we're adding on, you know, expanding on, on the front of the building. So the, the net amount of landscaping on the site is within a couple of square feet of what's there now.
Was that the, was, was that the distinguishing characteristic that went from, what, 35% to I think 34?
Well, it's currently 34, so we're basically maintaining what's there.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I appreciate that. As you're obviously aware, part of the, the criteria for the C variance is the hardship. Would you characterize the fact that this is a corner lot with the attached garage, would that essentially be the basis for the hardship? Because it would seem, I think everyone would agree, that if the attached garage wasn't there, we wouldn't have been in violation of the side setback. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. With respect to negative criteria, could you address that?
Well, I don't see any detriment that this would cause to the neighbors. I mean, like I said, we meet the minimum side door setback by a long shot and if we were to, were to move the porch over to the right and meet that, that doesn't benefit, you know, the person on the other side, being on the, you know, the opposite corner in any way. So I don't, I don't see, you know, any negative, any detriment as a result of this.
Do you have any reason to believe that the granting of the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the municipal zoning plan?
No.
Okay. Let's talk about aesthetics. We're, we're expanding the first floor deck. How is the second floor deck going to play into the first floor deck? Is it gonna be directly on top? Is it, is it part and parcel or are they two separate decks?
Well, it's gonna be the same dimension as the first floor deck. That's what you're asking. Yes.
I said, what, what I'm saying, that that play a role in the request to expand the first floor deck? In other words, was it, in terms of the municipal zoning plan, is this an aesthetically designed concept to have the two decks be essentially the same size?
Well, it's a little aesthetics, but it's also a desire to, to cover, ultimately, we want to cover the, the existing first floor deck and get rid of the awning that's there.
Okay. How would you think this would compare in terms of, is this similar to other homes on the street, in the neighborhoods, et cetera?
Yes. I mean, I drove up the street and there's obviously several other houses on Essex Avenue that have second floor decks, mostly the, the newer houses.
Is this an enhancement to the property? Will it enhance value? Will it do a benefit to the neighboring homes as well?
I believe so, yes.
I'll open it up to the board if they have any questions for Mr. Weiss. I'll open it up to the board if they have any questions for Mr. Weiss.
I don't have any questions for Mr. Weiss, but I want to bring up the issue with the street trees. We've had speculative builders cutting down trees right and left for the past five years. We lost 200 trees in a storm, according to Mr. Gallantino. We are really trying to recreate the Margate with street trees that once existed that distinguishes Margate from Atlantic City, Sea Isle, Avalon, Longport, any of them. The one thing Margate has going is its greenness, and we strongly encourage anyone doing improvements to their house to meet the street tree requirements. Would that be a problem, Mr. Schwartz? If it grass strip, I'm talking because you, it was a pre-existing condition. I'm talking about putting street trees in.
Well, as I'm reading Mr. McLaren's review, he says the governor's script cannot support street trees.
Well, also
You're saying
Exactly.
We would have no problem with that as a condition. Again, I could let Mr. Rozinski address that question, but I don't think he'd have a problem if that was a requirement.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Anything else from the board? At this time, I'd like to open it up for the public. If anyone from the public would like to speak, say your name. Public portion is closed. Leo, would you move the amendments with the conditions?
Sure. So we're going to require the two street trees, but behind the sidewalk. Is that correct?
Four.
Four, I'm sorry. Two on each frontage? Okay.
Yes.
So it's a C variance application. There's three C variances, which are, which are as follows, which someone needs to make a motion to grant, obviously, a combined side yard setback to the first floor porch 12 feet, where 16.7 feet is required. Combined side yard setbacks to the second floor deck, also 12 feet, where 16.7 feet is required. The landscaping coverage, 35% is required. They're 33%. And the conditions will be the applicant will comply with the required number of four street trees, but they can be behind the sidewalk. There's a couple submission waiver requirements, which I'll include, and then any other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report, unless modified or otherwise addressed during the course of the hearing.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Tom Collins?
Again, corner property. Rich, I think if we didn't have corner properties, we wouldn't have any cases. I think this is I think this is a pretty simple. All the variances are for porches. The top porch is open air. It's really not going to infringe on anybody. The house needs some refreshing. The street needs some refreshing. You know, you're at the end of the street from Boca. I pass it all the time until Boca closes street. But I think this is going to make a major improvement to the neighborhood, and I think it's very de minimis. I see no negative impacts. I vote in favor.
Clem Wazlaski?
Very simple application. We have visual enhancement of the property without any negative effects caused by it. I vote to approve.
Richard Patterson?
I'd like to thank Mr. Schwartz and the applicant for agreeing to put the trees in. I think this is a very small request. What they're looking for with, I see no detriment. I see only positives for the neighborhood. I vote yes.
Michael Cristaldi?
Another one for Dr. Weiss. A great facelift. I vote yes on this application. I think it's good for the neighborhood.
Jim Gallantino?
I agree with Mike. Dr. Weiss, I like that. I vote yes.
Margaret Gubernalti?
I agree with the other board members as well. I see no negative detriment, and it is certainly an enhancement to the home, and I vote in favor of the application.
Michael Richmond?
I agree with the other board members. I'm going to vote yes.
The application passes with seven in favor and none opposed.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone out there from the public have any questions or comments? Public participation is closed. Other business, forestry management plan, discussion and vote on options of paddle proceed.
Rich?
I received an email from Roger when he was away and suggesting that this not be part of the master plan but be accepted as a standalone document, and we can use it as a guide to establish ordinances. No matter how this document is accepted, it has no enforcement procedures until an ordinance is actually. I would like to propose that we follow Roger's recommendation. The rest of his letter talks about things that ordinances we would do, and that would be once this is adopted, we would do those things. So I don't want to go over those things in detail. That's, once we accept this, we can do that. So the question now is, do we suggest, or do we vote to include this in the master plan or accept it as a separate document and use as a guide or change it or reject it?
And, and Rich, it's Leo. Just as far as adopting it as part of the master plan, just so the board understands, that, that's an involved process. It's going to require budget. It's going to require hearings. It's going to require notice. It's going to require money. You know, everyone saw the email, hopefully, from Rich Dini. Hopefully, everyone's reviewed the plan. I obviously don't get a vote, but I would not recommend making this part of the master plan. There is other options, as Rich said. You know, one is to, do we thank the green team and say nothing for others' desired? Roger sent an email around. We could reject it outright as well, but my suggestion is, and, and, you know, Roger can chime in, and anyone can chime in, that making it part of the master plan is aside from the, whether it's the best thing to do or not, from a procedure perspective, is, is, is a bit of a haul.
Well, I think in my discussions, Roger, interrupt me or disagree with me, but in my discussions with Roger, as far as going forward, it really doesn't make any difference. It doesn't have any less teeth. It actually has no teeth, but we, if we use that as a guide, the teeth would be in the ordinances that we would recommend going forward.
Correct.
Tom?
So, Rich?
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, Rich. A quick question. Are you proposing, then, that we take a vote on acknowledging it as a separate document and to be made part of a process of applications?
I didn't, I didn't propose that yet. I was saying that I agree with Roger that that's what he would, he would recommend. Initially, I thought it should be part of the master plan, but in talking to Leo and Roger, I don't think it will be worth the effort.
Okay.
But the results will be. So I would think that that would be out of the question.
Okay, so if we acknowledge this report and then have Roger work on a more comprehensive landscape or tree ordinance, that would be preferable?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. We would accept this report. We would use this report as a guide to which ordinances and what ordinances, and some of them he's listing down here. But again, that's not for tonight's discussion.
Okay.
What's required, what's not required.
I believe the topic of tonight is, you're voting to make this a standalone document as a guideline or part of the master plan or nothing? That's it.
Rich? From anyone?
Rich, it's Steve.
Rich, Clem. I agree with you that it should not be part of the master plan. If we adopt it as a guide, reference, whatever, I think we should get the word "only" in there so that nobody misconstrues our intent.
I disagree. I mean, if we use the word, we use this as a guide, I don't think
I said "only" as a guide.
Yes.
Maybe "guide" is not the right word, but I I just want to make it clear that we are only using it as a reference. Somebody's liable to twist it around if it's not specific.
Yeah, and nothing in this would be enforceable unless we pulled something from it and the commission adopted it as an ordinance.
Correct.
So, so if that's the case, then Clem's right. It's just a reference, and we're going to accept it and and use it as a reference going forward for our ordinances.
Yes. I believe that's what Roger's recommending, because that's how I understood it, and that's what I agreed with.
Is that right, Roger?
Yes. And to, you know, take aspects out of this guideline, this forestry management plan, it's a standalone document, and we will continue working with the Green Team, Sustainable Margate, in developing ordinances that we need to see fit. And, you know, Sustainable Margate and the Green Team, they can continue doing whatever they're doing anyway.
And I think everything in the document, whatever they were doing, was always with the approval of city fathers, planning board, city employees, public, or whatever. But again, there's, there's no enforcement to this document, but there is benefit to the city, and the city's already accepted it, but I think it furthers it that the planning board accepts it as a document. And that was in the pamphlet that Steve emailed to everybody today, the benefits from it.
Yeah, Rich.
Any other ideas? Please state them now, and we can get moving on.
Yeah, this, this is Steve. That makes a lot of sense. I mean, it seems complicated, but it is just a plan, and it sets the parameters of who's in charge and of different things and how we proceed with our city plant, trees. I think it's a good idea, and
Well, then, if no one else has any suggestions or any objections to it
I have one, one thing, just what Steve said. He said it sets the parameters of who's in charge. The zoning officer is in charge. There's no question about that. Okay.
That's exactly right, Tom. The zoning officer is in charge, and it goes to the city engineer and the public works, and Sustainable Margate is only, only a
Advisor.
Advisor, and they do volunteer work, if anything, like for tree giveaways and stuff like that. We, Sustainable Margate has no control at all, but if so, it had to be by ordinance, and that's not going to be voted in.
So, Rich, do you want a motion here?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we acknowledge the receipt of the report as a reference material and that it's used going forward for our zoning.
I'll second that.
I, I don't, I mean, you made that, but we need to accept the document as a standalone document that we will use as a guide or reference.
How do you want to restate that? Do you want to restate it as just a standalone document and vote?
Rich, that's what I said.
This is how, this is, this is what I hang on. Adopted as a standalone document that we can extract what we want and put into ordinance form. The plan is a guideline. So with those words, I don't, I don't see the difference. It's just a little clearer.
All right, I'll make that motion, Rich.
I'll second it.
I think we can just do a quick nine-person roll call, a yes, no.
Okay. Tom Collins?
Yes.
Clem Wazlaski?
Yes.
Richard Patterson?
Yes.
Michael Cristaldi?
Yes.
Jim Gallantino?
Yes.
Margaret Gubernalti?
Yes.
Remy Pelosi?
Yes.
Joseph DiGirolamo?
Yes.
And Michael Richmond?
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, none opposed.
The next issue, I don't know, Leo, how we do this. We
Sure.
Need to go into executive session? How does that work?
Yeah, we have to, we have to go in executive session, but before I just have to, there's a resolution that we have to adopt to do it technically. It's Resolution Number 37 of 2020. It's a resolution that allows us to go into, into private session. It's necessary for the board to discuss in a session not open to the public certain matters related to items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B specifically with regard to pending litigation, the Maglietta versus Chocky Vadel Dicker case pending in the Superior Court in New Jersey, as well as other attorney-client privileged matters related to that litigation. So, I, we're not going to take any votes in private session. I can, I know that now, but to the extent that we do, they have to be in public session, so, and after we go into private session, we have to come back on, and, and I just have to make a brief statement. But the deliberations and any minutes from closed session will be released, will be released to the public when a decision with respect to the matter has been made and all rights to litigate or appeal are exhausted, provided that anything protected from the attorney-client privilege will not be disclosed. So if there can be a motion to adopt Resolution Number 37 and a second to go into closed sec, closed session, and then we'll, we'll do that, and then we'll have a brief discussion, and we'll come back out.
Leo, I have a question.
Sure.
Does the administrator lock out everybody who's not on the board?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to ask for Fred's help with that, so I'm hoping, yeah, so it's just going to be us once we go in and
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, Mike Richmond.
You can do an all in favor.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Motion passes.
Okay. We can go back.
Okay.
All right, we're back in, in regular session. We just were in private session discussing certain matters that are closed to the public regarding pending litigation involving the Maglietta Dicker lawsuit pending in the Atlanta County Superior Court and other attorney-client privileged matters. No vote will be taken on anything. And once again, the minutes from those can be released when allowed by law, which is basically when when all rights to litigate or appeal are exhausted, and that would exclude, still exclude any attorney-client privileged communications. So with that said, that's all I have.
And this is the first one we've lost since I've been involved.
Yep.
Seems kind of silly, but. All right, I hear a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? No.
Aye.
Hey, Rich, why did you change your name to Maggie?
Yeah.
You make a cute Maggie. Let me try it.
No, we do, do we do a motion to close?
We just want the motion to close the whole meeting.
We closed, right?
The whole meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were out. We've been out.
Yeah, we're good.